Good afternoon, everyone. We'll begin this afternoon's Stratford City Council meeting. And we'll begin this afternoon's meeting with our moment of silent reflection. I'd ask all of us to think about this Wednesday at ten thirty, when we normally celebrate the day of mourning, honoring all the men and women who have gone to workplaces across not only our province, this country in the world, but who have not come home. And it's our obligation as elected officials, along with their coworkers and their employers, and all residents and citizens to ensure safe workplaces for us now and in the future. So if we could please take a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. And I want to thank Counselor Henderson for her continued commitment to the Stratford District Labor Council, who are one of our partners in honoring those that have lost their lives. And again, this year, we can't have a service. But thank you to the members of the Labor Council for their continued advocacy. I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk.
Through your worship, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes. And there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting dated April twelfth of Council of Corporation of the City of Stratford be adopted as printed.
Moved by Counselor Bunting, seconded by Counselor Vazalacos. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and there is no addendum to be adopted. Moving on to item five. Report of the Committee of the Whole in Camera Session, item five point one, from the April twelfth session under the Municipal Act. As amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered: An appointment of an Energy and Environment Advisory Committee representative to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. And there is a motion that Anna Stratton be appointed as an Energy and Environment Committee representative to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee for a one-year term to November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, or until a successor is appointed.
By Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Henderson. Discussion, not all in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it.
Item five point two, the April twenty-sixth Committee of the Whole in Camera Session was canceled. So we'll move on to item six, hearings of deputations and presentations. And there is none scheduled. Item seven, orders of the day. Item seven point one is a resolution regarding the local planning appeal tribunal appeals. And there is a staff recommendation that council direct that council direct city staff to engage the city solicitor to represent the city at the local planning appeal tribunal on draft plan subdivision thirty-one, T nineteen dash zero, zero, one, and zone change application Z nine dash nineteen for Stratford with the municipal address of two thirty-six Britannia Street.
Moved by Counselor BD, seconded by Counselor Vazalacos. Discussion. Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. It just says in the report that there's no hearing scheduled. Is that, I assume that hearings are, once they're scheduled, then we would pay for them for the solicitor to prepare? We wouldn't be in a scenario where the solicitor would prepare, and then there would be no hearing, is that correct?
Through your worship, so typically how an ALPA hearing proceeds is there's usually a case management conference scheduled first. And the city solicitor would represent the city at that case management conference. And from there, any mediation or hearing would be scheduled. So the heavy work in terms of preparation happens once that hearing's been scheduled, not ahead of time.
Thank you.
Counselor Henderson.
I just have a quick question. So there were three different options presented. Are all three looked at when it goes to the hearing? And can it end up being any one of the three if they win?
Through your worship, so all local planning appeal tribunal hearings are described as de novo hearings, which means any new evidence or information can be given to the local planning appeal tribunal. So while council's decision on the application is certainly what the city will be putting forward in our case, the applicant and the property owners do have the option to put forward alternative scenarios as well.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, all in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it. Thank you.
Item seven point two is a resolution regarding various easements for Countryside Estates Phase Three. And there is a staff recommendation that the City of Stratford accept an easement over Part One, Plan forty-four R dash five, eight, six, two from Countryside Developments, Inc., for sewer and water main extensions. That the City of Stratford accept an easement over Parts Two and Plan Three for overland drainage and rear yard catch rate in need. That the City of Stratford accept an easement over Block fifty-nine from Countryside Developments for public access to the land. That the City of Stratford accept an easement over Lot thirty-one from Countryside Developments for a temporary road and water main. That the City of Stratford accept the transfer of Block sixteen, sixty-one. And that the City of Stratford declare Part Two, Plan forty-four R dash fifty-eight, forty-three as public highway and declare as forming part of McCarthy Road West.
Moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Henderson. Discussion. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a question about Blocks sixty and sixty-one becoming natural areas. I'm just curious as to, once they become city property, would parks and management, who would be managing those? And I'm wondering if there's a plan for like a wetland landscaping or some other LID type of gardening that that happens there?
That question would best be answered by probably Mr. St. Louis or Ms. Bridge.
Through your worship, I would assume that when the lands are turned over to the city and are designated to be in park development, that they would be managed under a park department.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it.
Item seven point three is a resolution for a contract for forty-seven Downey Masonry Restoration. And there is a staff recommendation that council approve an additional budget of eighty-five thousand from the capital facilities reserve. That the masonry restoration of forty-seven Downey Street be awarded to eight, one, eight, one, eight, five Ontario, Inc. at a total tender price of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, including HST. That the mayor and third or the respective delegates be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement.
Mover for such. Counselor Vazalacos, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it.
Item seven point four is a proclamation from the Communities in Bloom. And there is a motion that city council, as you write, proclaim the week of May second as Communities in Bloom Week in the City of Stratford in recognition of the benefits and values that communities in Bloom provide.
Counselor BD moving, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. All those in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it.
Item eight, business which previous notice has been given, and there is none scheduled. So moving on to item nine, reports of the standing city. Item nine point one is the report of the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee. And there are five items listed for consideration that follows. Item nine point one point one, presentation by cycle Stratford. Item nine point one point two, the AMLAS Water and Sewer Warranty Program. Item nine point one point three, twenty-twenty water summary report. Item nine point one point four, City of Stratford Winter Operations Plan. And item nine point one point five, request for exemption from the noise control bylaw for the twenty-twenty-one Stratford Festival Outdoor Season at the Festival Theater in Tom Paddock Theater.
Counselor Vazalacos will move, seconded by Counselor Bunting. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it.
Item nine point two is report of the Planning and Heritage Committee. And there are two items listed for consideration. Item nine point two point one and nine point two point two, both relate to an unsolicited proposal for the development of the Erie Street parking lot.
Moved by Counselor Rithma, seconded by Counselor Ingram. The report be presented, and all those in favor. Opposed, Fenny. Sorry, Counselor Ingram, did you, sorry, I apologize. So I will postpone that vote. I saw Counselor Ingram's hand. I apologize.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the unsolicited proposal for the development of the Erie Street parking lot related to the Grand Trunk Community Hub also included mixed-use housing. The brief description only includes public, private, and social housing. I'd like to make sure that it includes mixed-use housing as well.
Counselor Rithma, you'll agree to include the wording. Counselor Ingram, seconded that. Counselor Clifford, you had a question on that?
Yeah, I had a question on the RFP on the hub. Is there a timeline on that? Like, are we, is it in progress? Or is it going to be in progress in the next short while?
Ms. Thompson, I'll leave it to her to give you a timeline.
Through your worship, with respect to a timeline for issuing the request for proposed staff, we're working on a report that will be coming back with some additional items for your consideration. And we will endeavor to get that report to you as quickly as we are able.
Anything further? Okay, all those in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it. Thank you.
Item nine point three is report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee. And there are three items listed for consideration. Item nine point three point one is purchasing policy exemption for Viking-sized roller pro truck. Item nine point three point two is retaining a consultant for the twenty-twenty-two development charges bylaw. And item nine point three point three is the twenty-twenty lottery license activity.
Counselor Gaffney is Chair of Financial Move, seconded. Counselor Seven, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it.
Item ten is most intent, and there is none scheduled. Item eleven is reading of the bylaws. And there are seven bylaws listed for consideration that follows. Item eleven point one is acceptance of easement from Countryside Developments. Item eleven point two is dedication of public highway forming part of McCarthy Road West. Item eleven point three is transfer of Block sixty and sixty-one from Plan forty-four M dash seventy-seven to the City of Stratford. And eleven point four is acceptance of tender for masonry restoration of forty-seven Downey Street. And eleven point five is a man appointment by law, one, seven, eight, dash twenty, eighteen. And eleven point six is the twenty-twenty-one tax ratios, rates, and tax reduction by law. And item eleven point seven is a transfer payment agreement for court security and prisoner transportation program. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council consensus.
Counselor Henderson and Counselor Burbak will move, and seconded may be taken collectively upon unanimous consent. All those in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it. I'll declare it to move unanimously. So we'll take first and second reading. Counselor Bunting and Counselor BD for bylaws eleven, one through seven. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carries. Third and final reading is Counselor Gaffney, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Thank you. Bylaws eleven, one through seven, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it. Thank you.
Item twelve is consent agenda.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that members of council would like to deal with at this time? Okay, seeing none. We'll go to new business, and I have a couple things. First, I'd like to welcome Ann Serkos to the council meeting. Ann is our Acting Director of Human Resources and has joined the city. And this is Ann's first council meeting. So Ann, welcome, and thank you for joining us. The second person I'd like to welcome is our new Director of Infrastructure, Taylor Crinklaw, who has come back to the city. And Taylor has started with the city today. And Taylor, we welcome you back to the corporate leadership team at the City of Stratford. So to Ann and Taylor, welcome. And to Ed Delovick, who's still here with us. Ed, thanks for hanging on and finishing up some projects. Counselor Henderson.
They show themselves for a few minutes so we can see what they look like?
They're both in their offices. Perfect.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything else on their new business? Well, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank our city staff yesterday and Public Works. And of course, the members of the Stratford Police Service. On behalf of council, they put in a great effort yesterday in an effort for public safety and to ensure that a rally or protest, whatever you choose to call it, had minimal impact on the rest of the residents. And I know that for some of them, they took quite a bit of abuse, both verbally and threats. I do say this, that the Stratford Police did issue a statement earlier this afternoon that they are looking at charges with regards to this, to the organizers and people that were in attendance. There were thirteen bylaw enforcement infractions handed out yesterday. There were two arrests, one for uttering a threat and one for mischief. And there were no injuries with anyone taken to hospital. So I know that for our staff, it was a tough situation to be in, but I want to thank them, Adam Ryan and Jeremy Whitson, and the workers of Public Works, along with Inspector Taylor and the deployed staff from the Stratford Police Service. So thank you to them on behalf of council. Is there anything further? If not, a motion to adjourn to standing committees and reconvene in open council after. Counselor Vazalacos and Counselor Burbak, all those in favor. Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it.
I'd like to call the Social Services Committee to order. Any declarations of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. The subcommittee meetings are attached for everybody to read from April thirteenth. Delegations, there's none scheduled. And I see Kim has popped up online here, report of the Director of Social Services, that the report titled Social Services Relief Fund Phase Three allocation be received for information. And Kim, would you like to say anything about that?
Thank you through the chair. This is just to advise council of the funding allocation that the City of Stratford Consolidated Municipal Service Manager received, the third part of the social service relief funding. This is tagged for operational cost and we received approximately one point one million in provincial funding for those homeless and precariously housed.
Any questions, Counselor Gaffney?
I'll move the recommendation, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Counselor Bunting is seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Carry. So the next one is alternate housing pilot. This is sad news. The federal and provincial funding update. The council repealed the bylaw authorizing and signing out the contribution agreement for the Social Services Relief Fund Phase Two, hold dock with the Ontario Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing for the construction of eight modular supportive housing units at three ninety-eight Erie Street, Stratford, in light of the city's application be denied. Did you want to say anything about that, Kim, at all?
Thank you through the chair. This report is just giving you the update of the status of the provincial, federal funding for RHI. The first round was highly competitive. As you can see through the management report, that the CMHE has confirmed a hundred and seventy-nine projects with priorities given to indigenous governing bodies and organizations. And although we were not successful in the first round of applications for this.
Looking for a mover. Seconded, Counselor Burbak and Counselor Ingram. Any questions or comments other than that? All in favor? Carry. And the next one is a report of the manager of Ontario Works. Update on Social Services Relief Funding. That the report entitled Update on Social Services Relief Funding be received for information. And did anybody from the department want to talk on that? Want to talk? Counselor Gaffney?
Madam Chair, we missed an item. Subcommittee recommendation that a letter be sent on behalf of the City of Stratford City Council to the province requesting that funding programs provided to municipalities be predictable, stable, and flexible, both in scope and timelines.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gaffney. Are you moving that?
I will make that motion, Madam Chair.
And Counselor Vacalasis, will you second that?
Yeah, and I
And you have a comment?
I just thought, in addition, if we could add that it be copied to AMLAS for support.
Okay.
I will support that change.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Carry. Thank you for catching that, Dave. And then we'll move on to the report of the manager of Ontario Works. Kim, did you have anything you wanted to say on that?
Thank you through the chair. This report just gives council an update of the services supports that in the community that were enhanced to create or and help address the homelessness and housing stability through, that we are seeing through the COVID pandemic. And so it outlines the different supports that we've been working with our partner agencies to help those people that are under resourced at this time.
Yes, and for anybody reading it, it's, you know, the community has seen seventy-three households experiencing homelessness move into permanent housing across the City of Stratford, town of Saint Mary's, and Perth County. Fifty-nine of these movements occurred during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And it's great to see the partners working together in our community, especially the local community food center, United Way, Perthshire, Family Services, Perthshire. The local started providing meals in twenty-twenty. I mean, the reports are from Bay to Rio, and just sort of highlighted a few things that, how our community works together. So we have a mover? No, we don't. Counselor Burbak and Counselor Vacalasis. Any questions or comments on this report? All in favor? Carry. And the rest is for the information of council. So looking for adjournment. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Clifford. All in favor? Carry. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I will call the Community Services Committee to order. First item is, second item is disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof. And seeing none. Item three is subcommittee minutes that you have before you. Item four is our delegations for which we have none scheduled. Item five is report of the Director of Community Services, with item five point one being our OR Insurance Almond Score Clock Advertisement Agreement renewal. And we had a discussion at the subcommittee. And there is a motion before you that the agreement between the City of Stratford and OR Insurance Brokers, Inc. for advertising on the almond arena score clock be renewed for a further five-year term into June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. Motion by Counselor Bunting, seconded by Counselor Henderson, discussion. Seeing none. All in favor? And that is carried. Item six is report of the manager of transit, with item six point one being free transit during the pandemic. Again, this came up as discussion in our subcommittee. We had a good conversation about this, and it was sent back to the manager for recommendations with additional information provided. There is a staff recommendation, but I'll open it up for conversation at this time. Seeing none, is there someone that would like to make a motion at this time? Counselor Seven?
Oh, I was moving the recommendation.
That the management report titled Free Transit During Pandemic be received for information and that the, and that direction be provided to council with respect to providing free transit during the various stages of pandemic. Seconded by Counselor Henderson. All in favor?
I've got a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Gaffney?
So what, what direction are we providing?
Counselor Seven. I'll turn it back to you in terms of the direction.
Sorry, I misunderstood. I thought this was a report. We were going to review a report about this, but I don't have any direction.
Okay, I'll turn it to Counselor Burbak.
I was wondering maybe if Mr. Mosley could give us a little bit of discussion on what his thoughts are about the possibility of providing free transit, say during shutdown times or at different colored, whatever they're called, lockdown measures or COVID response measures. That would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Mosley, yes, there you are. Could I have you provide comment, please?
Yeah, certainly, through the chair. Thank you. Basically, depending on whether we're color-coded or we're, you know, whether that's gray or red or we're locked down. I believe the message has always been, at least for transit anyway, that essential trips has always been kind of the message shown. No matter what kind of color we're at, besides the green, excuse me, it was always about essential travel and try to stay home. And to have different levels of free fares, you know, based on green, yellow, or orange, or to keep changing it based on whatever level we're at, could, I could just see as confusing over time if that was the recommendation or the consideration of council. Only because it does change week to week. We've seen in the past that it seemed about every two weeks we, no one really anywhere stated a consistent level for a great deal of time. So it just, I would, I would just think it would be tough, tough to manage from a department point of view and possibly confusing to, to, to our dedicated riders as far as, you know, what does it cost today to try to ride and try to get that message out on a consistent basis? Could be, it could be a little troublesome at times.
Thank you. So Counselor Burbak.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion that we file the report providing the different free transit during various stages. So I'll move the stack recommendation that we receive it and then that we file it.
So I'm just going to go back to Counselor Seven as we had that motion. Are you, would you be willing to amend your original motion to that effect, Counselor Seven?
Yep, I agree to that.
Okay, I think Counselor Burbak, you seconded that. So you're, you're fine with your, your proposal there as well. Is there any further discussion to this? Seeing none, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. The rest is for your information. And I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Counselor Vazalacos and seconded by Counselor Gaffney. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
So we'll reconvene.
Item fifteen, one, is declarations of pecuniary interest made at standing committees. And if any were made, please restate them.
This time, I don't see any.
Item fifteen, two, is reading of the bylaws. And there is one bylaw, eleven, eight, confirmatory bylaw, which requires first and second reading and third and final.
Okay, moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Henderson. Confirmatory bylaw be read a first and second time. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenny, let's carry it. Third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Third and final reading, Council Gaffney and Council Bunting. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, Fannie. And that's carried. Thank you. A motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings. Moved by Council Vazalacos and seconded by Council BD. All those in favor? Opposed, Fannie? And that's carried. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.
Stay safe, everyone.